Well, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, July 1st, 2021, meeting of the Planning Board. Our first item of business is to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from June 17, 2021. Does anyone have any questions or comments relative to the minutes?
No questions.
Mr. Rota Lakis.
No comments.
Mr. Jerry.
No comments or questions.
And I have no comments either. Before we go much further, it just reminded me, as I look to my left, that Mr. Jerry is sitting in for an absent clerk, so tonight, Mr. Jerry will handle the clerk's duties for this board meeting. Next item of business is review and assign bills. We have no bills. Board member comments? Mr. Rao?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rota Lakis.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jerry.
No comments.
And I have no comments as well. Our first hearing is a new public hearing for Wyman Farms Site Plan Modification, location 935 Main Street. Mr. Jerry will read the public notice, please.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing Thursday evening, July 1st, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Wyman Farms LLC, PO Box 1205, Westboro, Massachusetts, 01581, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7, subsection F-3, for site plan modification by the Planning Board, to allow for revisions to the drainage system. The proposed development is showed on plans entitled "Remedial Drainage Plan of Land at Wyman Drive in Shrewsbury, Mass." in two sheets dated March 31st, 2021, revised on June 3rd, 2021, and on June 9th, 2021, prepared by Azimuth Land Design LLC, 325 Donald Lynch Boulevard, Suite 100, Marlborough, Mass., 01752, stamped by James Tetrault, P.E. The subject property is located on the north side of Main Street and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 18, Plot 017008. A copy of the plans may be seen on the Planning Board website at shrewsburymassma.gov/905-meeting-materials.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. And for the record, Mr. Rota Lakis will be recusing himself from this hearing, so if the proponent would like to introduce themselves and explain why we're here.
Mr. Chairman, my name is James Tetrault. I'm working for Azimuth Land Design. He is representing Wyman Farms LLC. And the reason we're here at this meeting is we are requesting a site plan modification. Modification specifically is what is shown in red on this plan, which are some improvements to the pickup of drainage over behind unit number 27. And I want to emphasize that point, that again, this is the, the outline in blue is of the overall property boundary. This is the central drive. The units shaded in all the way are the units that have already been completed. There are others are, which are just shaded around the edge, have been framed. But we're not making any changes to any other aspect of these site plans, except for the drainage pickup behind number 27. And the impetus for this is that in some of the early spring storms and at the end of winter, they had some incidences of the flow coming down this easement from the abutting property, having such velocity that it was jumping over the sort of stone-surfaced bowl that had been created to pick up that runoff. So the intention of this site plan modification is just to improve the pickup of that runoff. That's all that we're, that we're asking for. That's the only goal here, and we're not changing, again, anything with any of the number of units, their location, the grading around them, nothing with the road, its grades, it's with the sidewalk, the utilities, nothing, except what we're proposing in this area. So what we want to do is, there's an existing head wall right here, a couple feet into the easement on the abutting property. We want to go onto that easement, interrupt that existing line, put in a drop manhole, so that the line, that the drain line, existing line coming through, will hit that new drain manhole, then the flow will drop just short of four and a half feet. They will then discharge to a new head wall, that'll be several feet lower than the existing one. And then that, from that point out of that head wall, the discharge will flow over a stone path to the existing structure that's at the bottom of this bowl. We would also be installing, as an additional measure, we'll do just a little bit of extra grading around here, to ensure that if there is ever any overflow of this, that it goes towards a new proposed drop inlet catch basin in this location. The other red lines that you see are actually, they're really only slightly changed, where these tow drains, both in this area at the toe of this slope and around the slope here, leading this one to the proposed drop inlet catch basin. And again, just a slight change of this one here that was going towards another existing catch basin. So if I could, again, just, just quickly summarize, we're going to interrupt this pipe, install a new drop manhole, dropping the flow four and a half feet, install a new head wall. We'll have a little more riprap surface than is in this area right now, but it'll be at a lower elevation. So the flow out, the actual flow, once it comes out of structures, will be a bit slower and have some of its steam taken out relative to right now, so it'd be more easily captured by the structure at the bottom of the bowl here. And again, we're doing a little bit of extra grading to ensure that if there is ever any overflow out of this bowl, it comes straight to this drop inlet catch basin here. So I would just add, you know, we're not changing, the drainage divides on-site, where drainage, where drainage from off-site right now, and as approved on the plans, drainage from this easement was to be picked up, captured, and discharged over here in this area, this riprap apron, apron off the side of the wetland here. That is not changing. It's going to the exact same place. This is simply a matter of trying to devise a better measure, it's really sort of a belt and suspenders, in fact, again, having both the bowl that's there and adding a drop inlet catch basin, and again, taking some of the steam, some of the velocity out of this discharge, just to improve the capture of that runoff. That is the only change we propose, nothing else. I'll take any questions that you may have, but I just wanted to emphasize that point. It's only to improve the capture of runoff behind unit 27. There's no other goal here, no other changes here.
Thank you. Mr. Truman, can you give me the engineering take on this?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, this is actually a town drain that picks up some of the upstream nade hood. There is a, an easement that we have. It delies onto the property. It's, it's been there since the property was developed. So we have no issues with lowering, and I think, long-term, it will help stabilize that slope from eroding. We, you know, we have reviewed it, and they made some changes that we had, and we're happy with it.
Thank you. Board member comments? Any questions or comments, Mr. Rao?
I think it certainly looks like it's an improvement or previous design, but I was wondering if there were any storm events that happened that triggered this improvement, or?
I couldn't tell you the specific ones. I, actually, the one I have specifically in mind is recently, we had a one and change inch rainstorm at which there were not specific problems. So somewhere the threshold in which the existing layout and the existing elevation of this is, it's somewhere above a one-inch storm, which is, just for reference, in this area, the two-year storm, again, expected to happen on average every two years, is a 3.1-inch rainfall. So it's, it's somewhere above a one-inch rainfall is where there's an issue. And so we, it's not every storm that is causing a problem, but we're trying to deal with it. And again, as Mr. Truman notes, in the long-term, if nothing was done, you'd eventually get some erosion of that slope.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerry, any questions?
No, I have no comments or questions on this. I think it's pretty straightforward.
I agree. I have no questions either. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Do you wish for me to be at the table?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to see you again. I'm Adam Costa. I'm with the firm E-Tower. I'm Adam Costa, Representative Rosanos, who, as I think you know, live at the very top of the slope, and at home right there. Been before your board off and on for the better part of, what seems like an eternity, three, maybe two or three years now. Not here to object to the proposal tonight, but just to ask a couple of questions. Obviously, the Rosanos are concerned particularly about the stability of that slope. We've brought that issue to this board many times. The slope was increased from a one-to-one to a two-to-one slope. We've litigated the issue. We've settled that litigation twice, in fact. So the only questions we have in light of our review and our consultant's review, Ryan Roy's review, of the proposed drainage is first, we want to just confirm that the tow drain that was proposed before, which was the topic of discussion before this board, and even a topic of discussion in our, in our eventual settlement, will still remain on the, on-site, still be the four-inch, I think it was four-inch perforated PVC at the base of the slope?
That is correct. It will, yes.
So that was important to us. And then the other issue I just want to bring to the board, and I presume this is the case too, is I know that you typically collect a surety, some form of surety, bond, cash account, or otherwise, for components of a subdivision to be completed, and just want to be certain that the board has adequate means to ensure that this gets done correctly. Again, it's of significant concern to my client, because it, it does go, as you just heard the consultant acknowledge, to the stability of the slope. And if the slope fails, Wyman Farms may feel some of the impact, but the Rosanos feel the greatest impact, because it's their backyard that will collapse down, down the hill.
Understood. Mr. Cale, do we know how much bond is remaining?
So there was a tri-party agreement between the Wyman Farms developer and the town, and I believe it was the bank, was it the third party? So that's still in effect for the slope that hasn't been resolved or dismissed by the board yet. So any damage to the slope will be covered by that surety.
Okay. Appreciate that. Do you have anything additional to add, Mike?
Any damage to the slope, how long?
So, so generally with a tri-partite agreement, and correct me please if I'm wrong, the agreement would be in existence until such time as the board releases it. Typically, the board wouldn't release it until such time as there's a final as-built submitted to the board, and the board has signed off on the completion of the subdivision?
That is correct.
That's correct?
Who's going to expect the work?
Mr. Cale, is it Engineering Department?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll actually be inspecting myself, because right now, we only have one inspector who's pretty much running thin as it is to the town. So I've made the commitment that I will actually be out there myself, inspecting the work. And we've actually requested, as part of the approvals that we get, at least 72 hours' notice that the work is being done, because I think one of our biggest concerns was the means and methods of how to get in there and build this thing. So I will be out there myself, reviewing it.
Okay. Is there any particular long-term maintenance that's required in connection with the new work that's proposed? I know we talked a bit about maintenance with the, the earlier work that was proposed, but with the new work, is there, is there a maintenance plan that'll be adopted by the, by the condominium or homeowners association?
There is maintenance, there is maintenance plan for everything on-site. Are you asking for it within the easement off-site?
I was primarily focused on what's on-site and what you see in red that you're adding to the plan now.
That was, there was an operation and maintenance plan as part of the order of conditions from the Shrewsbury Conservation Commission.
Say that again? Well, the slope is entirely on the Wyman Farms property, right? So it would all be in, any, any aspect of drainage that's within the slope or surrounding the slope would be. Do you have another question?
Can you have these other people identify themselves, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I will. Sir, could you identify yourself, please?
Sure, I'm Ryan Roy. And then, gee, I was going to let the engineer speak, I mean, the attorney speak for me, but since, since you've asked me, I-
I just need you to identify yourself.
This single water problem is being addressed. I flagged quite some time ago, and I think we all heard it wasn't going to be a problem, and it clearly is a problem.
Few hours ago.
As we, as we also heard that water was not going to be a problem at the site, and it remains to be a problem at this site, and has even affected the retaining wall that exists there, that's had to be reconstructed the second time. This is a critical area. I've said this since day one. I still say this is a critical area. I don't know if, if the board has the authority, but because it's a critical area, I think a competent geotechnical engineer should review the installation of this, not just a town inspector. A true third-party inspector, this is a critical part of the site, should be constructed correctly. It has exhibited itself as being a repeated problem, and it's not yet been resolved. So that would just be my suggestion.
Yeah, thank you.
You might remember, Mr. Chairman, that when this was before your board some time ago, I think it was on a modification application, that is when the various consultants were involved. And I think it was GZA, maybe, that was engaged by the board as a consultant, because they had a geotechnical engineer on staff, and they were able to provide the review. So we were a bit surprised, you know, a number of months ago, when we contacted the town, when it appeared that the slope was maybe nearing completion, that there wasn't going to be sort of a final review or further review by that peer-review consultant. Given the degree of involvement and the importance of some of the issues, we kind of thought that GZA would come back in on the tail end, just to give a final sign-off. You know, to the extent that the board would entertain requiring that to happen, obviously, it's one additional check that puts my client at ease as the, as the abutter that's most directly affected by this.
I can say, on behalf of the applicant, we wouldn't have an objection to having a provision that says that it'll be reviewed also by a geotechnical engineer.
We appreciate that.
Okay, we can, we can certainly add that in there.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Excellent. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
I am Mark Radcliffe. We live at the bottom, the Spring Street, 364 Wobane Street, and we're concerned about the water. I know there's a problem with the water on the site, but the water goes downhill, and it goes into the wetlands, and the wetlands is getting wetter and wetter. There's more and more veins off of Hopps Brook, the trees and stuff and everything, and the foliage is falling down out of the wetlands, because you got rid of Victoria Circle, put that in there, got rid of everything, and now we have Wyman Farms. So just letting you know, somebody keep an eye on the water going down, not just on the site, down the hill.
Very good.
Ski Ward enjoys it, right? Because they can just pop all they want from it, but us, it's just, it's ruining my property with the land. I can't really, you know, stream water back out to the wetlands from my land anymore, because it's, someone's just coming to me, so.
Very good, thank you. Do we know that we'll keep an eye on that? Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Okay. With that, I want to take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing for the site plan modification for Wyman Farms, 935 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So we do have a draft decision in front of us that covers, I think, most of everything that was brought up at this meeting, with the exception of the addition for GZA or third-party inspection. Is that something?
Yeah, there's also a waiver that was submitted, but that was withdrawn, so probably vote to accept that withdrawal of the waiver. That was to submit a full set of site plans which were submitted.
So what we can-
I was going to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we actually defer to the town engineer for help with the language and the condition for how we want to state that exactly, for a review by GZA after the fact. Is that-
Well, I guess we'd have to get some proposal from them to do the work. I guess it's the first issue.
Right.
Maybe we should hold the decision to week to fee, or unless-
Or we can do that. We can wait.
Wait on the decision, find out the language that we want to put in there, and then we can vote on the decision at a next meeting.
Yep, August 5th. So you'd continue this?
Yeah.
For deliberations for this time?
I think that, given the gravity of what needs to happen in terms of getting GZA on board, I think it would make sense to defer decision at this time, and we'll continue the hearing until next week, although-
Wouldn't be the hearing, I mean, deliberations.
Deliberations until next meeting. Thank you.
So, yep.
Thank you for your time, everyone. So we have to vote on that.
Vote to continue the deliberations till August 5th, I believe.
Okay, yep. Put forth a motion to continue deliberations for Wyman Farms Site Plan Modification. Wyman Farms LLC, located at 935 Main Street, to the next meeting of the Planning Board, which is August 5th, 2021.
Second.
At 7:00 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next item of business is a public hearing for Falcon Farms. We received a notice from the applicant to request additional continuance. I don't see an issue with that. He has to get in front of conservation still, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, unless anybody has an objection.
I move that we grant the applicant's request for continuance and continue the public hearing on the Falcon Farms subdivision, definitive subdivision application until, was it Thursday, August 4th?
August 5th.
Thursday, August 5th at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item of business is a combined hearings, one for a subdivision, a definitive subdivision, and the other for the master plan development special permit for location, I'm sorry, yes, master plan development, site plan approval, a master plan development special permit, Northbridge Partners LLC, joint meeting with the Shrewsbury Development Corporation, for location 384, 386 South Street, and 721 Hartford Turnpike. It is the applicant present, and again, Mr. Rota Lakis will be recusing himself.
That's the only one we have right now.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. And Mr. Illiati will be sitting in for the special permit portion of this meeting.
Thanks. I dislike that, where you've got to get the, because had that not worked, this short meeting.
Please introduce yourself.
So my name is Larry Beals. I've been on Zoom calls with you, but we haven't been face-to-face. You're probably more used to hearing Todd Morrie speak, but he, you know, missed me. It was time to go on vacation, so he's driving across the country right now. He assured me tonight's presentation is going to be relatively simple. And what we'd like to discuss with you is, first of all, I think you know who we are. Devin works with me, Devin Howe. He's done a lot of the design work, so if I get stuck on something, he'll help me out. And Owen Hall is with Northbridge. You probably know Owen. So what we'd like to do with the board's permission is present, really focus on the site plan tonight. We've made a couple of minor revisions, nothing major, and try to get through the site plan issues, and then defer traffic discussion to you next meeting, because we're at a point with the traffic where it has been peer-reviewed, but our traffic engineer owes a response to the peer reviewer. And if we have that time between tonight and August 5th, we can probably wrap that up. And we'd like to come back to the board with either complete agreement or minor issues that need to be arbitrated by the board. So if that's acceptable, that's-
Sure.
That would like to run the meeting tonight. So I'm sure that everybody is pretty familiar with the site at this point, but the property that we're talking about, you know-
I'm very familiar.
The property that we're talking about is shown in green in the center of the slide, and it's, it's referred to as 384 and 386 South Street. So Devin, if we can go to the next one. So this is a, an overall site plan, and we'll get into larger images of the buildings in subsequent slides. So if you can't really see this too well, it'll, it'll blow up on the next couple of slides. And what I wanted to describe with this is, one of the changes to our site plan is resulting from a meeting with DOT, Mass. DOT. And DOT was adamant that this intersection on Route 20 can only be right-hand in. So the only way you can go in there is if you're coming this direction towards the site, turn right in, and then right out. So we've adapted the site plan to have the right-hand in, right-hand out. And if you have a good memory and remember the drawings that we showed you previously, there was a truck turnaround here, which we don't need, and there was a truck turnaround down here, which we don't need, partially facilitated by the fact that there is 360-degree access around the buildings, and 360-degree access down there. Devin, if you go to the new one, the next one, please. So this is the northern building. We're on the top of the site, and it's called Building A. It's 196,975 square feet, and we also added some office components on, on either end, which you're familiar with. Changes on this plan is, the building shifted in that direction, and that gave us a little bit more space over here to add a row of parking. The planning behind that is, it allows potentially to subdivide the building to two tenants, so that we've got parking here and parking out here. And we also added some parking on the northern side of the building, just to give it that, you know, more appeal to the marketplace and potentially two users on that site. So it gives us that multi-tenant flexibility. We have a total of 327 car parking spaces, 42 truck docks, and there are two drive-in doors to get into the building. Devin, the next one. So this is Building B, and this one is B, this was C. So we're on the southern end of the site. And I'm sure you know, but a lot of this design is shaped by the wetlands and the constraints. And, you know, planning in New England is you figure out all the constraints, and then, once you understand the land, you understand what your program is. So this, this is a great site to illustrate that. And this is Building B, which is 103, 103, 100 square feet, so rounded off to 103,000 square feet. That's the footprint. And then Building C is a much smaller building. It has a footprint of about 10,000 square feet, but it's two stories, so the gross floor area is up a little bit over 20,000 square feet. Major changes in this area is, we had a truck turnaround at that location. It's been removed, and we've replaced it with additional stormwater management basin at that area. We've added rain gardens over here for infiltration and stormwater management. This total project has 94 spaces, 32 truck docks, two drive-in doors, and we tried to design this so that it has flexibility to be used either as a logistics building or a GMP, a good manufacturing process-type building. It's adaptable to either one. And likewise, as I mentioned earlier, it's right-hand in, right-hand turn going out. One of the changes on this plan is the circulation around the building, which facilitates better truck movement around the building, and certainly much better fire protection if you can get all the way around the building. We added a double row of trees, primarily to buffer the residences to the east. And we showed you some sections, and, and it's, it's quite a distance, but with changes in elevation, I think there was concern about the appearance of this building from the east. So what we're proposing is a double row of trees, as shown on this. What we find really works well as a palette of trees is to use a red spruce, because it's evergreen, it's native to New England, it's pretty hardy, and it's deer-resistant. You know, deer do not eat spruce. And then we also added in a blue spruce, because you want to have different species. If, if one species has a problem, then the others pick up where it left off. So we added in a Colorado blue spruce, and the variety that we like to have is called a Fat Albert, because it's a, it's a tree that grows very wide, and it grows quite wide, and it also gets some height. And then to round it out, we've got the red spruce, the blue spruce, so we added a white spruce. You know, it's 4th of July weekend, so we've got a red, white, and blue. And it's not an attempt to be too funny, but those are all real good, hardy, New England spruce trees. So it should give us a pretty good buffer, and it should accomplish what we need. It's a double row of trees, and each- It's a double row of trees, and each tree in its individual row is offset 20 feet from the adjacent tree. But then, the row in front of it is staggered. So, from the view from the east, you would see a row of trees where they're actually 10 feet apart. And so, if the distance between each tree is 10 feet, all they have to do is grow five feet in either direction, and you've got a pretty effective screen. And with that staggering, we have found that it allows them to put plenty of water, light, and it's good growing conditions, you know, because there won't be any canopy above it. So, they should be able to grow fairly well and fill in. I don't want to go through each one of these. You probably know all these. We brought them along to remind you that we have looked at the public service and fiscal impacts. We haven't changed those. We've looked at these versus the changes that we made on the plans, and these remain essentially unaffected by the minor changes that we've made. Likewise, with the environmental impacts. I think we've had positive changes. We've got more screening, more species diversity. We've added rain gardens. So, I think it's a better design as part of this process. And then, community impacts essentially remain unchanged based on those changes that I described to you. So, that's... Obviously, that's our last slide. So, we want to turn it back to the board and answer any questions. But we'd also like to make a suggestion is, the follow-up work that we have to do is we need to respond to all of the peer review letters that we have formally, so that you have the record. And the letters that we have is one from McMahon Associates, which is your traffic consultant, will respond to that. Graves Engineering, I think there's some minor changes at this point that we need to address. And we received a letter also from Quinn Engineering on behalf of some of the abutters, and we'll be responding to that as well. And we have a comprehensive letter from the town planner, which I think, for the record, we should respond to in writing so that we answer all of those questions. So, if I may, I'd like to discuss schedule with you a little bit. Our next meeting is... Your next meeting is August 5th. We'd like to continue to that meeting with the goal of talking more about traffic that evening than anything else. And then, just so Owen doesn't have to tell you, I'll tell you that we're looking at, you know, we're in the middle of the summer. Turns into fall, it turns into winter. So, with all that said, we'd like to be on a track where we can maybe wrap this up at the next meeting or shortly thereafter with a decision so that we can commence construction in the fall and get a start on things before winter conditions. So, I'm informing you of what we think is a good schedule. I'm not telling you the schedule that we need to have. So, with that, I think that concludes everything I have to say.
Okay. Now, you know, this is all brand-new information for us. We haven't received any documentation, so I'm letting the public know. This is news to us today as well. So, we have no real definitive plan in front of us other than we knew that MassDOT was going to require right-in, right-out.
Okay.
So, I'd be very interested in the detail of what's gonna constrain the exiting-out. It was very difficult to see because it's such a small presentation. So, I just want to ensure that the right-in, right-out is really forced on the site in order to ensure people don't... I see it all the time, no left turn, and people are taking left turns, right? So, we want to make sure that we can do the best that we can...
Yes.
...on that.
And we're deferring that to the next meeting because it's more of a traffic issue than a... Our firm will be collaborating with the traffic engineer to make sure that we can address the issue that you just raised.
Okay.
To your satisfaction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eliyadi, you have any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Ralph?
Uh, no comments at this time.
Mr. Jerry?
No, you already touched on my one comment, and we're deferring it, so no additional comments.
Yeah. And your one comment was the right-in, right... that intersection?
How that'll be enforced.
Okay, good, good.
All right. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to be heard. Yes, Mr. Rickert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight in person. I'm here with Lisa Cosette. We're both members and officers of the Shrewsbury Development Corporation. As you know, that board consists of seven individuals who were appointed by the selectmen some 18-plus years ago as a result of the town spending some very serious money to buy this property in an effort, one of the efforts being, at least in my mind, to deal with what was proposed at the time to be a 600-plus-unit apartment complex. Imagine the traffic that that would bring. So, mindful of that, the Shrewsbury Development Corporation has been working through various ways to masterplan this property over the years. We've done at least two masterplans. We've gotten grants to build subdivision roads, as you know, because in the last year, we did that. We've gone through various machinations to try to get this property to a point where it is developable and desirable. I would say that, and it's important for you to know that the Shrewsbury Development Corporation voted unanimously to support this proposal. We think that these... This group is... And we're happy to see that this group has been very consistent in addressing the various concerns and trying to address the concerns that your board raises and has raised throughout this process. And not just your board, but the conservation as well. And I think that that's very important. You know, our job was to attract development to this site. We've had various suitors over the years, but never to the altar. The bottom line is that we're here, they're here. This is a very important proposal for the town of Shrewsbury. It is exactly... It's doing exactly and suggesting exactly what we have been appointed to try to do, which is bring development that brings tax dollars to the town of Shrewsbury without serious drain. This project, I would suggest to you, does that. It meets the various goals that the development corporation set early on and that have been reemphasized by the selectmen every time we've met with them. So, I think you've heard enough from me. I know that Lisa would have a few more words, but thank you very much. I want you to know we support this.
Good, thank you. Ms. Cosette?
I'm gonna repeat a lot of what Richard said, if you don't mind. And I love to talk, so let's settle in. So, thank you for this opportunity to have a joint meeting with the planning board. I like to take opportunities like this to give a little bit of the history. I don't think it will affect your decision one way or another, but I think it's important every time we can to just explain a little bit more about this property. So, thank you for hearing from me. So, in 2002, Avalon Bay purcha... made an offer to purchase this property, and their intent was to build a 600-unit, very large apartment complex. And there were... Naturally, there's some concerns with that kind of purchase. So, the town of Shrewsbury stepped in and was given a certain amount of time to go ahead and make that purchase themselves for that same purchase price. So, back in 2002, a town meeting who represents all of us here who live in Shrewsbury, they agreed and voted to preserve that property, not for open space, but for industrial, commercial use. And they then purchased the property for $6 million. Excuse me. They then, a town meeting, voted to create the Shrewsbury Development Corporation, and that is what Richard and I serve on. Excuse me. So, back in, I guess it was 18 years ago, not necessarily 2002, our corporation was formed, and we were asked to carry out this mission, which was to recover the town's investment of that $6 million. And we had three goals in mind, and I'm going to read them as they are stated in our charter. So, our three goals were to strengthen the non-residential tax base and preserve this large parcel for industrial and commercial use. We were also to create good jobs in Shrewsbury for our citizens. And also, we were to promote development that protects and respects the interests of the neighbors of the property. So, we have been approached over the years, 18 years in total, by a number of potential buyers for a myriad of uses. A data center, renewable energy, warehouse and distribution, manufacturing, biotechnology, athletic facilities, housing and mixed use, and some nonprofit uses, including our own Beal kindergarten through four elementary school. We have not been approached yet by anyone to purchase the land for open space, but we would certainly entertain it, just like we've entertained all these other interests. We have received past offers, and we entered into negotiations, but you, as the planning board, have never seen a site plan for you to approve. So, I want to clarify something that it may have said... been said at the last meeting or the meeting before. The plan Northbridge referenced, I believe, in the last meeting, when particularly during the traffic study, was a conceptual plan, and it was not an approved site plan by this body, by the planning board. It was used to perform various studies and as part of grant applications toward developing infrastructure. And it was also used... It was used for many things, but it was also used to help us market the property and to show various configurations of buildings and what a full build-out would be in a campus environment. We've received an offer from Northbridge to purchase just part of the property and entered into negotiations as the proposed development meets all of our criteria and will allow us to achieve what we set out to do, which is again to recover the town's investment of $6 million. This will allow us to achieve what we set out to do again. So, they have since... Northbridge has made their proposal even more attractive by including the entire property. So, originally, it was just one parcel, and now it's the entire property. We support the development, as Richard said, as it is a use in line with our master plan, which Richard also mentioned, and we've had two. And the intent for the property will generate jobs and provide ongoing commercial tax revenue to the town. We were also involved in the MassDOT Route 20 corridor master plan process so that the project doesn't just address current traffic issues, of which there are many, and we agree with everyone here about that, but it also takes into account all of the projects in various stages of development, including this one that's before you. And as we saw, as we heard tonight, they even met with MassDOT, and now we're going to see more about how they handle that intersection. Lastly, we've been attending all the relevant meetings, including this one, to watch the plan evolve. And we commend Northbridge, thank you very much, and Beal's Engineering on your willingness to adapt your plans to better support the interest of your neighbors. So, thank you very much. And we continue to support the development as proposed. I personally, not as part of the STC, but I personally appreciate your willingness to keep the old barn. And I also appreciate how you're trying to compromise between the interests of your South Street neighbors and Thomas Farm Circle. And again, we just unanimously support this project, and we're the reason it's before you today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Mr. Singer?
Yeah, David Singer, 400 South Street. Some of the traffic things, obviously, now will be deferred to the next meeting. The expected and now right-in, turn-in, right-turn-out is gonna create a whole 'nother can of worms as far as accessing that site point. South Street being one of them. We talked about that a little bit last meeting, but we'll defer that, you know, again, to the next one, including the bus stops at the bottom of South Street and Route 9, and blah, blah, blah. While we all agree this proposal is less destructive to the property as a whole, though still a devastating blow to the flora and fauna that depend on it. And the recent conversations after discovering the history and importance of the Allen Farm and family contributes to the town of Shrewsbury is all good stuff, for sure. But after some thoughts, a few components make this proposal about as unfit as the Bowler Plan in different and also similar ways, on top of all the traffic issues and things that we'll discuss. First, as horrific as the Bowler Plan was, it actually followed a little bit more in the original master plan, and the master plans and their site plans just continue to change. They're just... Every meeting, there's something new. So, it's kind of like a box of chocolates. You just never know what you're gonna get. But it actually followed the master plan in a more regular corporate campus-type of environment to help draw high-tech research and development corporations to the area. The Northbridge Plan is kind of the opposite. And aside from some walkways and sitting areas and respect for the land a little bit, it really more resembles, as it stands, more of an Amazon UPS or high-volume logistics and distribution center, and not really what the town is looking for for the site or what the site commands. While vehicle trips are reduced in the Northbridge Plan based on what's proposed, it's really like a wolf in sheep's clothing as truck trips would be drastically increased. Bringing with it increased dangers to an already dangerous area on Route 20, not to mention all the intersections and all the sites on Route 20. The Bowler Plan had no Route 20 access point, so right there, that's just a major difference. It had no major truck traffic. It was car traffic and maybe a box truck delivery here and there. And it certainly had its problems as well, but it certainly had a lot of safer components to it also. With all those components, with traffic, safety, slope, drainage, wetlands, wildlife, all those factors, any proposal that's gonna be proposed for this site is really like trying to jam a square peg into a round hole filled with all of the above wetlands, traffic issues, everything else. In this case, it's actually two large rectangles. You may get the permits and permission to build and jam those in, and probably will, but not without causing irreversible damage to the property and everything around it. It just doesn't fit for a lot of reasons. Traffic, again, will be addressed. Next point was brought up by, I'm sorry, I don't... I do want to remember name, but the Shrewsbury Development Corp. I put this down, and now it becomes very viable. While many residents, some board members, and all the folks involved in the project are kind of just finding out about the history of the Allen Farm, the Allen family, the history of why we're even here at this meeting also needs to be addressed. You guys, you know, did a pretty good job of that, recounting Avalon. They wanted to buy the land. It had come at a time when we had just built a high school. Infrastructure was bursting to the seams. And Dan Magado got all the departments on board with a special debt exclusion that was approved by the town. We paid for that, the townspeople, through the debt exclusion in a special tax that I believe lasted 13 years. And it was sold as a way, as a cost-saving measure at the time. We didn't want this big Avalon building, oh my gosh, which actually moved down the street six months later, so we ended up with it. But eventually, not only are we gonna save money now, but we'll also get our money back later by selling the land, which is why we're kind of at this, you know, meeting here tonight. That debt exclusion passed what I call the most lopsided vote in the history of voting, 1,613 to 199. That means nobody really knew what they were voting for. Problem was, at that time, there really was no testing or land surveys had been done yet to discover or decide how difficult, through the years, 20 years later almost, this property would be to develop. And that 20 years later.
Can I interrupt you for a quick moment? I know you like to do a lot of oration, but I relate each other, consolidate it a little bit more.
Yes, we're almost done here, absolutely.
Thank you.
Little small crowd disappointment on that one tonight, but I know where everybody is. Oh, I know, I tried to get my hair cut, they lost power in Hudson. Their light company is not as good as ours, apparently. Anyway, to get through, the Shrewsbury Development Corporation has spent many years, as was just noted, trying to sell and market this largely undevelopable, if not extremely difficult, land to develop, as we've found out, to try and get our money back. In fact, I'm not sure, but I believe this PNS eventually fails. The board decides against this, that they're kind of ready to turn this back over to the town because this is their last straw. If that's the case, if the board decides with all the mitigating factors, and we'll find out with traffic, that this site is not fit for the property, which it really isn't, on top of the mandate passed last fall in the Community Preservation Act, it may be time for the town to let this property return its investment to the townspeople in the best way possible, by leaving it alone. After all, we did pay for it through higher taxes with the Beal project, with the new police station. We still voted to fund this. We still voted to fund this in a very tight economy. And in this case, we already own the land. So, and to wrap up, after almost twenty years, due to the extreme difficulty this property is to develop for a multitude of reasons. The newly proposed CPA and the pandemic that has changed all of our lives and attitudes and in many ways, let's stop looking at this property as a loss to the town, but rather a quality of life gain to the townspeople in this new normal. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Okay, seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to continue both of these hearings. However, before we do that, I did receive a document asking for a decision deadline for the warehouse distribution and logistics camp and campus master plan development, site plan approval to be extended to September 2, two thousand and one. So I'd like to have the board weigh in on that. Does anybody see any issues with that? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to extend the decision deadline to September 2, two thousand and twenty-one.
I will move that we extend the decision deadline for the warehouse distribution and logistics campus man, campus plan development, site plan approval, Northbridge Partners LLC. Location, three eighty-four, three eighty-six South Street and seven twenty-one Hartford Turnpike to September 2, two thousand and twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Next, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that has been extended. Now we'll accept motions for continuing both of these hearings.
I would move that we continue the hearings for the warehouse distribution and logistics campus master plan development special permit and site plan approval for three eighty-four, three eighty-six South Street and seven twenty-one Hartford Turnpike to the next meeting of the planning board on August 5, two thousand and twenty-one at 7:00 PM.
You can do that one too. You can do them both.
I said both.
I apologize, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So extend it to next month.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rodolakas is in earshot. There he is. We're back. Good to see you too. That is all we have for public hearings and meetings for this evening. We do have new business. Item of business is to discuss and vote on delegates for CMR PC for fiscal year 2022. Like to ask for volunteers, if possible?
I've been on that for the last couple of years. I don't mind if somebody wants, fine, but otherwise, I don't mind continuing my next one.
I'll be up as well on the other delegate.
So do we need to move that?
Yeah, let's have a vote. I think we do.
I'd like to move that Mr. Rao and Mr. Rodolakas represent the Shrewsbury Planning Board at the CMR PC for fiscal year 2022.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
The next order of business, we don't actually, under old business, the Cypress Ave Plan, we're having some delays getting our hands on a Mylar for you guys to sign. So we, forthcoming, but I think we're going to actually pull it from the agenda for next time until we know for sure we have a Mylar for you to sign.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
Have a great evening, everyone.